All right, if we could all please rise for the invocation.
Sure, let's go ahead and pray.
Father, thank you for this evening, and thank you for the spring, the promise of new life, and just a reminder of your grace to us, and renewal of life as well. And Father, we just pray for, folks are going to be speaking tonight, God, help us to be kind to each other, and just use wisdom with our words, and that, Father, pray you'd help us to listen, God, you tell us the Proverbs to be quick to listen and slow to speak, and God, help us listen well to each other and hear what we have to say. God, give us on the council wisdom tonight, help us lean hard on you, and not just our own understanding, Father, so that the things that we're trying to make decisions on, Father, we can do well by the folks of our city. Father, we thank you for, while we're here inside and warm, we got folks on our, from our EMS squads and our patrolmen that are out on the streets, working hard to help people, and so we pray for their protection, God, and give them wisdom too. Many times, they're just in split-second decisions, that they need to do things, and try and decide what's the best for people, and God, help them to be able to think clearly, and always be thinking about what's best for the folks of our community, Father. We thank you for this evening, praise things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, may be seated.
Pledge.
At this time, recall our meeting to order. This is Thursday, April 22nd, City of Xenia, City Council Meeting, and at this time, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean, here. Councilman Scrivens, here.
Councilwoman Dean, here.
Councilman Branham, here.
Councilman Herschel, here.
Mayor Mays, here.
President Smith, here.
Thank you very much, so sorry about that. Now, we're going to rise again, and do the pledge of allegiance, led by Councilman Scrivens, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Herschel and Councilman Scrivens. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes from the April 8th, 2021, regular meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes, please. Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seceded by the mayor. Any additions or corrections to the minutes as written? Not seen any, so roll call to accept the minutes, please.
Vice President Dean, aye. Councilman Scrivens, aye. Councilwoman Dean, aye. Councilman Branham, aye. Councilman Herschel, aye. Mayor Mays, aye. President Smith, abstain. Motion carried.
Thank you very much, we have no special presentations tonight. First up is audience comments. Guests are asked to come to the podium. If you would, please state your name, address for the record, limit your comments two to Keep in mind, we do have a public hearing tonight, so if you are here to speak on that, you will have an opportunity, but you're welcome to come to the podium. Thank you.
My name, Charles Green Jr., of Xenia, Ohio, is that right here in town? And just coming to speak today about the condition of Lexington Park, and hopefully put together a game plan to get that improved, and the degraded condition of it renovated on some notes. Just want to speak on a little bit about the history of it. I know a lot of times, dating back to like the 60s and 70s, it seems like the park is forgot about until somebody from our community goes in and does a little bit of work, and then Xenia comes in, and they kind of put the wind under our sails, and help us out. Unfortunately, don't know if we'll be able to get that done, in terms of us getting a head start, so we come to ask, in the future, if we put together a plan, if you guys could help us out to get our park together, in terms of the parking lots conditioned, the gravel is in shambles, the basketball court is falling apart, there are no lines for kids in that area to work on, free pointers, free throws, on different, just little things. We can get possibly the lights put out there for security reasons at nighttime, and possibly the bathrooms open, if possible. As I said, make it brief, just wanted to come and let you guys know that that's something we would love to see as a community, is just some improvement for the kids in that area who walk to that park and use that park daily. That's all I have, thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you, well noted. Anyone else care to come to the podium?
Is it okay if I remove this when I speak?
Yeah, if we get your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you for your time, nice invocation, although I'm not sure it's springtime yet. I was downtown last night. My name is Craig Short, I live at 1787 Stone Road, I've lived in and around Xenia now for about 32 years. Professionally, I'm founder and president of a company called Advanced Data Recovery Systems, so data backup, storage, cybersecurity. If you or your kids have been to Dayton Children's, Dayton Physicians Network, Ohio Valley Surgical, your data sits on our systems. And then through some strange clerical air, I also sit on the Board of Advisors at One Bistro, just right there. So, I've come here tonight to talk about strategically plans for the City of Xenia, Ohio, and what, you know, could be done, what can be done. Want to compliment the board on what has been done, the park is beautiful, the bicycle hub was a great idea to capitalize on the fact that we're kind of the crossroads of America, and I'll be honest, initially, I was not really in favor of what was done, but as I've kind of watched it all unfold, I think that, I think it works really well, and I think it emphasizes the potential of downtown Xenia. The railway station is really nice, and by the way, whoever decided to move the food truck rally down there, that was a stroke of brilliance, there was like 3,000 people there last week, so whoever did that, that was a great idea. When I look at a business opportunity, I look at a situation, I always look at it as a puzzle, and I try to figure out which pieces of that puzzle are in place, and what other pieces could be put in place that would help an organization, or help, you know, a municipality maybe to capitalize on the strengths they have, and try to improve those. One of the things that I have seen, and I was just kind of learned of this recently, I'm not deeply involved in it, but was a potential ordinance called DORA, that would allow businesses that are disparate to kind of join more together and work more together as a unified kind of system. So I can take, you know, the things that are happening down at the railway station with the food trucks, I can take the, you know, the folks who sell adult beverages in the middle of town, and I can take folks at the park down by the armory, and when we have a festival, or we have an event, or something like that, people are more freely able to move around. I know there's a gentleman who is an Italian restaurateur, who's been considering moving to Xenia, Ohio. I would much rather see him open a business right down here, where we have a lot of vacancy, rather than put it out by Walmart. I know that the folks who are potentially considering being tenants in the EV building are also very interested in whether or not we would grant the freedom for them to be able to potentially use that as well. I mean, think about that, between, the EV building is gorgeous, if you can imagine its potential to have shops and things on the bottom floor, and potentially apartments or lofts on the top floor, and all the economic benefit that would come to the city. So, I think that in evaluating these kinds of opportunities, it's important that we look at them from an evidentiary kind of standpoint. What is the real evidence? What do we know? We know that if we look towards cities like Lebanon Springboro, Fairborn, Wilmington, Middletown, Tip City, Sidney, 61 in total across the state, if anyone are interested, here's the complete list, and if you were to contact the chiefs of police in those cities, not only would you find that crime did not go up, you would find in almost every conversation, and I only say almost because I haven't talked to everybody, that crime went down, and here's why. So if you're a criminal, and you want to commit an assault, you don't do it in the light, right? Evil hides in darkness, where if you have a thriving downtown, you're going to have a lot of people moving around, a lot of commerce taking place, people, you know, with ill-will don't hang out in those kinds of places. So again, if you were to look at the preponderance of evidence, I think you'll find it would be an extreme benefit to the community, and those cities I mentioned, Lebanon Springboro, Fairborn, Wilmington, I mean everywhere around us but here. So if I and my wife, or someone else is planning, hey, let's go to this city, well, then what will we do there? Well, I don't know, what do they have? What are their, you know, what boxes do they check? Well, we don't check a lot of those boxes, where if we check that box, I think you'll find it will really improve the amount of business down here. Now, does this solve the whole business climate issue in Xenia, Ohio? No, but it's another piece of that puzzle that helps us move closer to it, and I would say this to you, back to evidence-based decision-making, if I had been accused of crime, and you were my jurors, I would hope and pray that you would look at the evidence as you judge me, and not go towards personal preference or opinion, or shift your views as the political winds changed. So those are my views, those are my opinions, and I was very surprised, as an IT company, we do a lot with social media and that type of thing, we have professionals that do that sort of thing, and I've talked to other business owners in the area that have a lot of people that follow them on Facebook. Local, we found out over 10,000 people follow these local businesses, some of the individual businesses have over 8,000 followers themselves.
Sir.
And we were really surprised.
Sir, you're at four minutes, I'll give you a minute to wrap up.
Thank you. We were really surprised by the conversations that were sparked when this came up, and quite honestly, a great degree of disappointment, I understand, a couple weeks ago, this was brought up for referendum, and it was very close, but it didn't pass, so again, we would ask you that you would consider this, and, you know, all of these people are very interested in knowing how this is going to go, so I think it would be very popular for the city, it would be helpful for the leadership of the city, if you guys would again, please consider this. Again, from an evidentiary standpoint, I can't find a downside here, I really can't. So with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come to the podium?
My name is Robert Moore, I reside here in Xenia on Bellbrook Avenue. I'm here today to talk about Lexington Park, as well. Some might know, 2011 Christmas, my father was murdered up there, and personally, I just feel like if we could get like, like Charles touched on, like the parking lot, some lights up there for security, I personally feel like it wouldn't happen again, and I pray and hope it don't happen again to nobody, because, you know, it's been like 10 years and I still feel the pain from that. And like the man that was just up here, he touched based on something that said like, crime hides in the dark, and I feel like if there's lights up there, I feel like nobody will pull up there to try to do anything of that matter again, and I just hope that I got to take that into consideration, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to come to the podium? Last call. All right, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is old business, our first item, number one, is Resolution 2021-U. This is a second reading, this is authorizing the purchase of IT security programs and professional services by the IT department for up to $75,000 without competitive bidding. This was introduced by Councilwoman Dean on the meeting on April 8th.
Move for passage.
Thank you, move for passage by Councilwoman Dean, do we have a second?
Sir.
Seceded by Councilman Scrivens, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice President Dean, aye. Councilman Scrivens, aye. Councilwoman Dean, aye. Councilman Branham, aye. Councilman Herschel, aye. Mayor Mays, aye. President Smith, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much, our next item, Resolution 2021-Letter V as in Victor, this is a second reading as well. This is authorizing a property use agreement with Studio V Signs for the use of city-owned property located at 713 North Detroit Street. This was introduced by Mayor Mays on our last meeting.
Thank you, sir, move for passage.
Move for passage by the mayor, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seceded by Vice President Dean, any further discussion or comments regarding this? Roll call, please.
Vice President Dean, aye. Councilman Scrivens, aye. Councilwoman Dean, aye. Councilman Branham, aye. Councilman Herschel, aye. Mayor Mays, aye. President Smith, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you very much, our next item, Letter H is public hearing, our first is Ordinance 2021-09, a second reading, this is amending the official zoning map at the City of Xenia to rezone 53.4 acres at the intersection of Van Eaton Road and Lower Bellbrook Road from the PUD Plan Unit Development and A1 Agricultural District to 44.7 acres of R-1C, one-family residential district zoning, and 8.7 acres of R2, two-family residential district. This was introduced by Councilman Branham on our April 8th meeting.
Move for passage, please.
Thank you. So at this time, I am going to open the public hearing, and invite anyone who is in the audience tonight to speak in favor of the rezoning.
I'm Robert Arnold, the applicant. We have, you guys had a meeting on the 8th about this, or no?
This was an introduction.
Okay, well anyways, so you're familiar with the property, so I don't need to go through all of the particulars of where the utilities are and those types of things, I guess. But anyways, we, we're excited about the property, we like the Xenia area, we've done a lot of stuff in and around, you know, Beaver Creek, Xenia, and we feel like the time is right, especially right now with the market being the way it is all over the Dayton area, that we need to add some additional housing of this type, and we're excited to be back in Xenia. So we're here for any questions, and we'll kind of leave it at that, so appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Also invite anyone else who'd like to come to the podium at this time and speak in favor of the rezoning. If we could get your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Donald Barnett, my address is 1164 Lower Bellbrook Road, and I'm not familiar with a lot of the rezoning and a lot of things that's going on here. I just had a question or two, you know, I live out there, and I'm familiar with the Ryan Homes and Sterling Green, and that project, you know, and I look across there, and here's every house down through there looks the same, and so on, and I just wondered, by rezoning, do you have any control over what it's going to, what kind of houses, brick, or, you know, the appearance and longevity of the appearance of the deal that's going in there? And I, by the other meeting you had, you know, I noticed the lots are real small, it seems to me like it's kind of a continuation of the Sterling Green or Ryan Home project there, and I just had that question, you know, if there's, if this is a zoning where you could just do anything there with those lots, once it's all approved and everything.
Okay, so normally, in a meeting like this, this would not be an opportunity to ask questions, however, I think, I believe that is a fair question, Mr. City Manager.
If I'm now ordering anything I'm saying, feel free to correct.
No, Mr. City Manager, do you have?
Yeah, I think generally, what we can say is that our land development code does have requirements in terms of material types, square footage requirements, setbacks, and so forth, so there are some requirements. Some of the particulars, as it pertains to the type of housing, and how that would vary from property to property, is still going to be subject to the developer and the folks building the homes, but there are some general guidelines, some requirements in terms of the desire to have a higher level product. I think beyond that, Mr. Fortner could probably answer more specifically.
Oh, is he here?
Yeah.
Mr. Fortner, I apologize, I didn't recognize you in the audience with the mask. Do you have anything else you want to add to Mr. Branham's statement?
Sure.
Please.
Can't hear you, I know what to do.
I didn't recognize you. Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, I think Brent captured it for the most part, a little more specifically, we do have a standard that limits the percentage of vinyl on the front facade of a house to 50%. We do, for this type of zoning, we have a minimum square footage of 1,400 square feet per home. This will have the same zoning as the Sterling Green Crossing Development, so beyond that, we do, you know, have the setback requirements, those are probably the two, we also do require an architectural feature on the front, like a covered porch, or a big window, or something like that, so just adding more detail to what Brent stated.
All right, thank you very much. If you're not finished, you can come back up.
They're on Van Eaton Road, I have that ground across the road there and everything. You know, if you go down Van Eaton, will there be any control over what it looks like from Van Eaton? We're bumping up against properties there, 10 acres and so on, and a little larger homes, you know, than what we're looking at there in Sterling Green. Is there any control over that with what's going on now, this zoning change and so on, putting you in the city?
So, I'll bring up, just from Planning and Zoning Commission, with Brian's report last week, and the developer, two weeks ago, developer, they did mention having a retention pond out on the end of the property, and plus plenty of green space there at the road front edge of Van Eaton, with also some walking trails going around that pond feature. That was preliminary designs, but definitely was going to give a nice little buffer at the front side of Van Eaton Road, with a nice little retention pond.
Is that, is that stuff in the paperwork that it'll happen, you know, or do you have the option of doing anything you want after this zoning thing? I know they mentioned last meeting, you know, it wasn't nothing ironclad about anything that was presented, that map and stuff.
I do think that that can change, correct, based upon Brian?
So that, the open space along Van Eaton Road was a preliminary concept, that's, we cannot mandate that at this stage, however, the layout of the site, and the topography, the fact that there is FEMA-regulated floodplain at that end of the site, it naturally predisposes the site to having open space at that end, so it's most likely you are going to have open space, just because it's hard to develop in floodplain, so, but we can't, and we do have some additional setback requirements whenever you have homes that back up to a major street like that, but beyond that, it is, there is some flexibility with the layout.
Thank you very much.
I apologize for not knowing too much about what's going on here, and that's all I have to say there, and appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. No need to apologize. Anyone else care to come to the podium and speak in favor of the rezoning? All right, at this time, I will ask if anyone would like to come to the podium and speak against the rezoning. If you would, just give us your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Wendy Waggoner Harris, my husband and I live at 1,000 Van Eaton Road. When driving from one end of Van Eaton Road to the other, one is aware that it is distinctly rural, there are farmed fields, natural areas, livestock such as horses, cows, goats, deers, as well as wildlife that is not immediately noticed. Homeowners have property of three, 10, or more acres. Whether a lifelong resident, or someone who moved to or built on this land, their presence appears to be purposeful, with a noticeable lack of for sale signs here for the last several years. Like-minded residents come to this type of area and remain because they do not want to live in or adjacent to the suburbs or tightly planned communities. With the exception of the recent buildup of Sterling Green to the east, the proposed development is inconsistent with the current use of nearby properties. The density of these small lots will increase traffic, noise, activity, and light. There will also be a disruption to wildlife. Even when land is farmed, it provides cover, freedom of movement, and the ability for animals native to the environment to be able to forage and hunt. For all of these reasons, we are expressing our opposition to the proposed development of this property. Upon receiving the initial public hearing notice, we were very curious, so we researched Mr. Arnold's Developing Ventures to see what might be expected. The first hit in our search was Astelier Fine Homes, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, and when you look at the images of these homes and their attached property, these appear to be closer in keeping with the look and size of other properties on Van Eaton Road, and the properties south and west on Lower Bellbrook Road. The possible owners would seem at least to be of a like mind compared to the current ones, with a desire for space and privacy. Based on the planning and zoning presentation of April 1st, this is not the plan for this property. We are aware that we are technically living in Spring Valley Township, we are however tethered to Xenia, and pay taxes to Xenia City Schools, and though we have no children, we have actually been committed to supporting these students that we do not know, because of the importance of a well-rounded education, quality buildings, quality staff, extracurricular opportunities, and the impact those make on a community. We would not want it thought that due to our residential status, that we simply don't matter or contribute to Xenia in any way. We are aware that the letter we received notifying us of the public hearing through the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council was merely a courtesy and formality, as the planned development comes within 300 feet of our property line. However, community does not end at 300 feet, and what is done here can have a rippling effect in the area. We do express our appreciation for that letter, we, as I'm sure many other people, would find it very unpleasant, a surprise, to realize unexpectedly that they had numerous new neighbors, backyards abutting their driveway. According to the Dayton Daily News article of April 12th, 148 lots for single-family homes on about 45 acres, and eight duplex lots on about eight acres of the land, will certainly make for several hundred new neighbors in this space, should the ordinance go through. If this planned development does in fact go forward, we would like to hear more about how it would be integrated into the current environment and landscape. There was mention in the last meeting of a pond, and some buildup of land mounds on the street sides, but only the street sides were mentioned. As our property runs the entire length of the northern side of the proposed development, we would appreciate more details on what that would look like. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else care to come to the podium, give us your name and address, let me your comments two, three minutes?
Hi, my name's Lynn McCoy, 1035 Lower Bellbrook Road. We actually learned from a neighbor on Van Eaton about this whole development project. I understand that on or around March 17th, a notice of public hearing was mailed to all the property owners within 300 feet of Van Eaton and Lower Bell. We are just outside 300 feet. We knew nothing of this going on had a resident on Van Eaton not informed us. However, we are still affected, as this plot would be essentially across the street from us, given that, our location. Fortunately, I guess, that we have the church between us, but, you know, I was really taken by surprise that this was even happening, because we hadn't heard anything about it. We've been residents, technically Xenia Township, for 11 years now. I formerly lived in the City of Dayton. We bought our property because of the rural appeal, and we've been very happy there, but like I said, it's very disappointing, because obviously, you know, it was 11 years ago, but when the property was sold to us, it was kind of implied that nothing else, I mean, we knew Sterling Green was down the road a little ways, but it was implied that we would never have anything behind us or in front of us. We now have something semi behind us, and now we're going to have a lot of things in front of us, and just kind of like the last lady spoke, so many of the residents have purchased our homes there because of the environment, the nature, and it's just sad to see that disappear.
Thank you very much, anyone else care to come to the podium at this time? Anyone would like to come to the podium? Anyone would like to come to the podium and speak neither for or against the project? You may do so at this time.
I just thought I would address some of the comments. I mean, we, we do plan to work, obviously, with Xenia to try to create a nice atmosphere along Van Eaton Road. We do, we will have that green space there, as was mentioned, because of the way that the water kind of drains, and that is the lower spot. It's a natural spot to put a nice pond, and we really believe that we're going to create a nice buffer. And I understand that what people say when they say, well, gee, I don't want to have this. And, and we do both kinds of developments. I did one around the corner on Hedges Road where we did five to 17 acres. And I can tell you the argument on the other side of that then. We did that, and regional planning said, we're not doing this anymore. We're not going to take these farms and split them up with just, you know, one house being on five acres and 10 acres and 17 acres because it's, it's not the way that property is designed to be developed. Now, you know, I don't know if that's true or not true, but that, that's their position. And when you have an area that is serviced by sewer, which this area is, you know, it cries out to be developed in a way that you can utilize those utilities. Now, you can't go any further with those utilities, so it does kind of stop there, obviously. But, you know, it is one of those things that, you know, when you have utility service like sewer in an area, you're probably going to see it developed with a little higher density than five acre tracts and so on. Having said that, we are going to try to be a good neighbor and, and do something that it will be compatible with, you know, the residents of Van Eaton Road to a certain extent, but we won't be able to do five acre tracts, of course. But, so, just a little insight from a developer that's done, you know, both sides of the tract, and so, appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come to this podium, speak either for or against?
Sorry, I didn't like to prepare a speech or anything. But since you mentioned it about the sewer and the drainage and everything, this has been a problem for years, and we have no recourse with the city of Xenia because we're Xenia Township. However, on our property, and you mentioned sewer, okay? On our property, we have a so-called natural drainage pipe, not that a pipe could be natural, but there's a pipe that dumps out into our side yard. From this natural drainage pipe, every time there is a hard rain, we end up with trash and things that, since it's a church across the street, it's obviously would have to be coming from the Sterling Green plaque. Now, when we add another 140 homes in this area, you know, what's it going to do? Because, I mean, there's hard rains, and there's like a stream flows through our yard. But on even smaller rains, I have to go out in the side yard and pick up trash that's coming out of this so-called natural drainage. Another concern that, that we have. And if anybody could direct me on who I might need otherwise to talk to about this, because when we brought it up to Xenia Township eight years ago, we were just kind of told it's natural drainage with a lot of unnatural things coming through.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. We already have a introduction, a motion for passage. I'm looking for a second, please.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Herschel. Any discussion from my colleagues at this time? Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Ms. President. Ms. McCoy, thank you for your comments. Just in terms of your question, you may want to check with the Green County Health Department. There's a fellow there by the name of Mark Isaacson. He does sewers and water, and I'm sure he could answer any of your questions. In relation to that natural drainage way that you have, that's called a swell, and water finds its own level. And obviously, if there's a heavy rain, then you probably need some work done on that swell so you won't be retaining that extra water. So I share your concern on that.
And, I mean, I understand.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, read out debate now. It's, you had your chance. Thank you.
In terms of Mrs. Harris, we share your concern. That's why you purchased the property initially, and I understand where you're coming from on that. To the developer, we understand that anytime that there's amenities already available, it's ripe for development. We understand that. So we have a classic problem here of whether or not we're going urban or rural, or whether or not we're going to have something in between. Now, the number of houses that you propose, that could be probably worked on. I understand the population dynamics, and, you know, it's something for us to give a serious consideration with. Xenia wants to grow. Xenia will be growing. Now, whether or not we'll be growing with this particular plot or not, we'll, we'll figure this out here shortly. But we share your concerns as property owners, and we also share your concern as a developer. It's, it's a dilemma, and we have to make a choice tonight. So we thank everyone for coming and expressing their opinion. And at the end of the day, we're still all Xenians, and we still have to live here together. So we need to work this out, and we all need to leave the room happy about the decision that we make. With that, Ms. President, I thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Scrivens, any of my other colleagues care to discuss this?
Yeah, I guess I agree with, with Councilman Scrivens. This is a, the, the border between the city and the townships is, is a tough place to be. And my family owns property up in Miami Township, and had a farm up there, and a lot, lot of issues when we were dealing with the stone quarry marching out our direction, and whether that was going to take over the farmland, and how that would affect the, the folks that had, we had a lot of folks up there had, you know, small farms, 20, 25 acres up there as well, too, and those kind of issues. The, the challenge, though, is, 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 is housing is extremely tight in the city right now, and we're, we're at a point where we need to make a decision as a city is, as to, you know, are, are we going to provide some additional housing for folks? We have a lot of housing, we talked about a minimum of 1,400 square feet. We have a lot of housing in the city that is well below that in terms of square feet right now. In, in the Lane Wood and the Old Arrowhead and the States, you know, something in the, many of those homes are in the order of 800 to, to 1,200 square feet. We have a very large populations moving into Wright Patterson now. Young couples are going to be coming and, and looking for starter homes, and those, those are not readily available in Beaver Creek anymore for the professionals that are going to be coming in there. And, and we are looking to attract those types of families to come and be part of our community. And this, this flavor of homes is what those folks in their early twenties that are just starting a professional career are going to be looking for, and that's the, that, at least from a city perspective, is what, is the, is the type of folks we're looking to attract. This, this hasn't been recently annexed from the township. It's, is that a fair statement? It's been there for quite some time, and many times, I think, when you see land that the city owns, or that's within the city limits and has been zoned, even as a PUD, there's an indication that was going to be residential property there. And that, obviously, this thing's died out on the, on the, on the south end of town there in the 2008 timeframe, a lot of the development, even Sterling Green stopped at that point due to the financial crisis. But we're, we will most likely, for those areas that are zoned residential, we will be building out on them at this point. And that's, that's, that was part of the plan of the city, and, and we're, we're looking to replace or add additional housing that's looking to track the, you know, the types of folks we're looking for to come and be part of the community. It's, it's a tough place to be when you're, when you're on the border of the township and, and adjacent to that, but, but all I can, all I can add is, is that this, this isn't a new thing, that this has been zoned residential there. And whether, whether it was going to be a PUD, and realize a PUD just gives that developer the ability to not meet a, a number of the existing zoning conditions, and that may be tailored, but doesn't guarantee that there are going to be five acre lots or anything else, especially since we have the utilities there. And if, and if someone had promised you that that wasn't going to be building out, they definitely didn't speak from the city perspective. It may, may have been the, the folks that were selling to you, but it wasn't, it wasn't the city that was saying we're never going to develop that. Because historically, this, this had been planned from a city perspective to be a residential area. So I, I think as we move forward with this, though, understand what you folks have had to say, and I appreciate what we talked about in terms of our zoning regulations. We don't, we don't get into the specifics of each of the individual homes or those types of things as, as we do that, but we do have some general criteria, and there may be some opportunity to have some public input in that as well, too. But, but this is definitely going to be moving forward. This is, this is where, where the city's headed.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I will, for the sake of reading this into the public record, I did get one comment regarding the public hearing that I'll read at this time, and this was, "Dear Councilmembers, I am against this application. The lot size is too small, lot density too great, kind of development fostered by such zoning is unsightly and detrimental to the community. Tax revenue generated by such development will not cover cost of maintaining the development or additional burden placed on Xenia Community Schools. I do not want to see unsightly development across my property, and my neighbors don't either. Agricultural land is rapidly disappearing for Green County, and it is in large part due to overdevelopment by builders such as Mr. Arnold. This is bad for all of us. Please do your duty to preserve and the nature and health of our community. Deny the application." This was submitted as an email on Thursday, April 1st by June S. Harshbarger. So that is for the record. So at this time, we have a motion and a second, and I will ask for a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilman Wynn Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Burnham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is new business. First item is an administrative motion approving and authorizing the execution of a partnership agreement with Green County for the years 2021, community housing impact and preservation under the CHIP program grant. Mr. City Manager, would you like to extrapolate that?
Yes, sir, thank you. Staff is recommending council again authorize the city's participation in a partnership agreement with Green County for application to the Ohio Department, or excuse me, Ohio Development Services Agency for the CHIP program grant. Under the proposed agreement, and if awarded, the program would be administered through the Green County Department of Development, but obviously, all, all city residents would be, qualified residents would be able to participate through the county development agency. CHIP initiative provides funding for improvements to homes of income qualifying individuals, and the joint application approach that we've taken with Green County Development Department really allows our, our joint application to be eligible for a higher amount of grant money than were we to do that individually without participation with the county. As part of the overall agreement, the county is agreeing to provide $48,000 of their home program income and $1,600 of their CDBG repair program income toward the CHIP program. Likewise, the city, under this agreement, would provide $22,500 in our CDBG program income toward this round of CHIP program activities. And just as a reminder, those, those program income monies can only be used toward like types of programs from whence they originated. So this would be a qualifying program for the use of those funds. So again, this evening, staff is recommending that council authorize us to execute the partnership agreement and move forward the application, hopes that we can secure this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion from any of my colleagues to authorize for the application to the CHIP program?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilman Herschel. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by the mayor. Any further questions or comments?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Ms. President. I'd just like to throw my support behind this program. I think it's an extraordinary program, especially for low-income individuals. I happen to have the good fortune of being able to take advantage of this program back in 2017, and it worked out very well. So I'm strongly in favor of this program, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Anyone else?
I'll just make a few other comments. I had an opportunity to talk this over with, with Brent earlier, and, and I, I think partnering with the county allows us to apply as a, as a joint set of municipalities and the county will be for, for a larger grant amount, and my understanding, we're, we'll be going for a joint application around $400,000. That'll be in addition to the dollars, the other dollars that the county is putting in from these other funding sites. And once again, those, the county will be administering the program, so it's not, it's not burdening us from a, from a city perspective to actually administer the program and put, you know, grant the funds and track those kind of things. But I think our, our folks in Xenia have a real opportunity to, to do the application there. So as we, as we move forward on this, I think it, we obviously have, can do that from the city perspective, but from a, from just an individual and a, and a personal perspective, if you know of anybody that would, that has some issues with their property on the maintenance, the upkeep of that, and they don't have the funds to do that, but they would like to see it improved, I'd really recommend that you contact the city about that, or one of us on the council will help you figure out the application process for that. And Brent, I think you said that we, we had a good return on, on the investment in terms of, of the actual grants of those backed into the city of Xenia in the past.
Yeah, we've got really good success with this program, and again, the, the burden of the administration is with the county, and county residents are eligible, again, qualifying, income qualifying county residents, but our, our local residents have definitely been the, the majority beneficiaries of this program through the county and, and our partnership with them.
Right. So this is, this is no city funds are invested in this, this is, this is a...
Twenty-two-five, the city.
Right. But, but in terms of the $400,000 we're looking to get from the state program, and to have the county be able to administer this, I think this is a real win-win for the city.
Yeah, and that local program income share is actually not originally city monies. That was, that was grant monies from other programs that becomes what we call program income, but then has to be funneled back into a like program. So again, those dollars are really limited in the use to this type of program.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Burnham?
Aye.
Councilman Herschel?
Aye.
Mayor May?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda. Did I get my agenda? I lost one. Nope, I covered it up, sorry. Item two, administrative motion, this is authorizing the renewal of property and liability insurance through the Public Entities Pool of Ohio for one year effective May 1st of 2021. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. City Council, at its last meeting, has granted verbal authority for us to give an initial commitment to an automatic renewal for the city's property and liability insurance for our policy coverage year of 2021, 2022. This evening, we are returning to seek a final and formal approval for this program year as presented in item two of the agenda this evening. The city's been engaged with the Public Entities Pool of Ohio with local brokerage services through Montgomery Insurance for the last five years or so, and we are again seeking renewal of PEP for these services and wish to continue our relationship with the folks of Montgomery. Want to give a shout out to the folks of Montgomery, they've continued to really step up and be helpful with this. The staff has spent a considerable amount of time evaluating the coverage, working with both Montgomery and PEP to make sure that all of our listed items are accurate and up to date. It is worth noting that last year, the end of last year, PEP hired a firm to go out and do revaluations among all of the pool entity partners, primarily at their facilities, to do revaluations and, and update the, the covered amount for those facilities. As a result of that, our insurance premium actually has increased quite a bit this year, a fair amount more than we had anticipated. We do have a sufficient budget, resources to be able to cover that with the monies available today, so I'm not concerned about, you know, paying for it, but I just wanted to know with council, there is quite a bit of an increase this year, but it's mostly because of this revaluation and the estimate to replace a lot of these facilities is a lot higher now than it was a few years ago. With that being said, staff's requesting council approve an administrative motion this evening allows us to fully engage in insurance coverage with PEP, and again, continue our relationship with Montgomery Insurance.
Thank you very much. I'll accept a motion to... I'll accept a motion to authorize the city to continue their agreement with Montgomery Insurance.
So moved.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vice President Dean. Thank you. Any comments or questions regarding this? I've not seen any. Can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Herschel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Very much. Next is administrative motion awarding the bid, authorizing city manager to execute a contract with Fillmore Construction for the 2021 street paving program. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. Staff has completed the bidding process for our 2021 street rehab program. Due to some timing delays, we did opt to do a solo bid this year, whereas in recent years, we have joined the Green County Engineers Cooperative Bidding Effort. So again, we sort of one-wheeled it this year out of interest of being able to get a timely bid response. The proposed program for 2021 as bid includes portions of Allison Avenue, East Main Street, Branch Street, Ray Street, among several other smaller portions of roadway, and there is crack ceiling component to this bid as well. On April 15th of this year, the city received an open bids from three qualified paving contractors. Among those bids, Fillmore Construction LLC was the low bidder, with the base bid and alternate totaling $886,917.73, and this did fall within our budget amount and well with an expectation for the estimate. Staff has determined that Fillmore's bid is complete and that the firm is qualified and capable of executing the rehab work. So therefore, this evening, we've seen a reason why the bid should not be awarded to them. And as a result, staff's recommending that the 2021 street rehab bid should be awarded to Fillmore Construction under the terms of step forth in describing your agenda report.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to authorize the bid?
So moved.
Moved by the Vice President. Do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Any further questions or discussion?
Brent, I understood that the streets that are being revamped, what's the extent of the crack ceiling? And I couldn't find that in the bid. Maybe I wasn't looking in specific. But are they going to be doing the crack ceiling for us versus our own folks? And if so, what's the extent of the crack ceiling? Outside of those areas, are we going to be doing crack ceiling across other parts of the roadways?
Yeah. I'll ask Mr. Berger, City Engineer, to kind of address the detail on that.
We're fairly caught up on the crack ceiling. As a matter of fact, of this entire bed, crack ceiling amounts to about $17,000, $18,000. I can tell you, it's Union Road, which was done in 2018, small portion of East Church by the Roundabout, Montana, which was done in 2019, and Colorado, which was done in 2020.
And again, I just want to reiterate...
As part of this bid.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I just want to reiterate the importance of these roadways that we have fairly recently resurfaced and rehabilitated, coming back within the first maybe two to three years to do that crack ceiling for any of those cracks that started to emerge, and that preserves the life of those roadways. So while we have recently invested in those roadways, the reason we go back out and do that crack ceiling is to ensure that we are maximizing the long-term value of that investment. So again, a lot of the streets for crack ceiling are focused on those types of roadways. You might ask, well, you know, there are a lot of cracks in other roadways. It really becomes a point of diminishing return, and once we have cracks that have reached a certain point, it really just isn't economical to go out and do extensive crack ceiling for those roadways. It's a tough answer, but that's the reality.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know that I concur with that, but I hear that answer.
And again, it all comes back to the state of the road, the age of the road, and how extensive, you know, that cracking is.
Right.
But again, many of our roads have reached a point of diminishing return where to invest the dollars to crack seal them, we would simply, the road's too far down.
So I don't want to hold this up, because I'm in favor of everything that's in this proposal. I'm just concerned about a lot of the additional roads and the degradation of those, and not doing what we can do to preserve those. I understand, and we have limited funds, right? So I'll set that aside to a future time. I would like to peel that back, and maybe, I'm just way too ignorant on that. But I'm just concerned that if we don't get a little more aggressive on the crack ceiling on some of the other roads, we're going to just continue to fall behind. And I'm not saying that's going to resolve all the issues and stuff, but I would like to address that.
Sure. And I think that really is, it's the precursor to a conversation that unfortunately this council has no choice but to try to find a solution to. And again, speaking with the council earlier this year, we identified that in these times with COVID, with a lot of economic uncertainties that not only here locally, but across the state and across the country, we continue to face. Now was not the time to look at, you know, finding that solution. But this is a problem that will not go away. It will only get worse, and finding a way to bring more resources to our overall transportation rehab program is...
That may be part of the discussion of the new Public Utilities and Infrastructure Committee.
Yeah, absolutely. That's one of the first things that that committee needs to discuss.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to say to the residents of the city that we see on this particular bid plan, we have seven areas that we're going to try to intervene in. Obviously, a lot of areas we can intervene in, for example, Country Club Drive, or East Third Street, or North Patton Street, or you pick one. They're all red in the PCI index. So we're doing the best we can with what we got. Hopefully, what's his name, Tyler Perry, he can send his jet full of money and we can fix these roads. Other than that, we have to do an incremental fix, and that's what we're about. So I understand your street may not be on this list. My street's not on this list.
And the mayor's street's not on it.
Exactly.
Put that on the record.
So I ask the citizens of Xenia, we have to roll with this punch here. And it's not something that we all want, but it is what it is. And we just have a limited amount of money, and these streets, obviously, from our engineering standpoint, have reached their breaking point. So this is it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very much. Anyone else? Roll call.
Vice President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Herschel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. We've got quite a bit to go through in that work session, so keep that in mind. Next is an administrative motion authorizing the purchase of two one-ton pickup trucks for the Public Service Department's Water Division from Key Chrysler, pursuant to the Ohio revise Code Section 12504. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. As planned in our five-year CIP and with funds included in the 2021 budget, staff is requesting authorization to purchase replacement pickup trucks for our water maintenance division. This will be for vehicles number 1230 and 1206. The vehicle scheduled for replacement are model years 2008 and 2000 respectively. I think the agenda report speaks to, you know, some of the condition issues with those particular vehicles. We believe that both vehicles have reached practical end of life as frontline service vehicles due to their condition and the growing maintenance expenses associated with keeping them roadworthy. And as a result, we are recommending the replacement. The water capital budget includes $45,000 for replacement of vehicle 1206 and $65,000 for replacement of vehicle 1230. And again, we detail in the agenda report, which I won't belabor the meeting tonight with those details, but exactly what the strategy is on these replacements. As a normal practice, staff does routinely solicit price quotes for such purchases through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program. Through this process, the city received a price quote in the amount of $33,102.35 and $34,000 for each vehicle respectively. Fortunately, however, Key Chrysler was able to provide a price quotation for these two replacement vehicles at a price lower than the state bids. Key Chrysler quoted both vehicles at $29,961. The Ohio revise code does allow us to award to a local vendor if its price that they quote is less than state bid on equivalent terms. So we're excited to be able to keep the purchase local here and support what is a very good local business. With that in mind, we are requesting the authorization this evening to purchase these two one-ton pickups from Key Chrysler, an amount that totals $59,922.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Do I have a motion to authorize the purchase of these two trucks from Key Chrysler? I'll move. Moved by Councilman Herschel. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Scrivens. All right. Any further comments? Okay, roll call.
Vice President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Herschel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is administrative motion authorizing the purchase of a Bobcat Skidsteer loader for the Public Service Department's Wastewater Treatment Division from Bobcat, I'm sorry, Bobcat of Dayton through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services, known as ODS, Cooperative Purchasing Program. And turn it over to the City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Also is planned in the CIP and budget for 2021 is a replacement of our Skidsteer loader for the wastewater treatment division. The unit being replaced was originally purchased in 1997, and it is a critical piece of equipment for daily operations at our Ford Road Wastewater Treatment Plant. Staff also intends to cross-purpose the unit and make it available for a variety of other city operational tasks as needed and as available, which is why the purchase includes various attachments such as the forestry tool. Over the past couple of seasons, the city has had to rent skid steers in order to have access to this forestry tool, and we have spent considerable resources in rental fees. And we feel that with this purchase, the opportunity to purchase that equipment, have it on hand, not only save tax, pay dollars, but at the same time, give us greater flexibility in dealing with some of these overgrowth issues. So that is why you're seeing some of those types of attachments. The attachments that are required actually requires an upgraded version over what we have. So the old version, we couldn't even use these attachments for. So again, that's why this platform was selected. The proposed purchase would be made via the DAS Cooperative Purchasing Program, as indicated, with the approved supplier being Bobcat of Dayton. Staff's requesting authorization to complete the purchase of the skid steer and the attachments, as detailed with the total price as indicated in the agenda report. I want to note that I had some additional conversation with Councilman Branham, who does have some unique expertise in the area, given his association with public service previously. But there were some questions about the platform and why we went this direction. So I just wanted to state for the record that we're open to some amendment to this approach. The key is being able, in terms of the particular unit that we've recommended, the key is replacing this vehicle so that we have something that's reliable on a daily basis. But with that, I will give it back, the floor back to the council president.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have a motion to approve the purchase of the Bobcat?
Councilman Smith, I would like to make a motion to purchase a T-77 Bobcat, which would be a tracked machine versus a wheeled machine that is equivalent spec-wise. Main reasoning for that is because of the fact that the forestry cutter will typically be used in pretty aggressive grades, whether that be, you know, Solarnitz Park, whether that be uprightaways, down ditch lines, curb lines, and stuff like that. I feel like this machine would be better utilized. It does come with a slightly higher price of, I'm sorry, I lost it on my page, it's $102,122 with the proposed attachments. It's approximately $3,400 additional. I just feel that this machine, Bobcat of Dayton, when they rent one of these machines out with the forestry attachments and what the city's previously rented out, they come as a tracked machine with the forestry cutter.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to make a purchase of a different piece of equipment. So I'm out of order here.
As a point of information, there is a second with Ms. Dean.
Thank you.
If it's all right, sir, I can...
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to ditch you there. I'm sorry. I did get that second. So we have a motion and a second for a purchase of a different piece of equipment. So where do we go from here?
So what this would do, I'm going to talk to Mr. Branham beforehand. Issuing this motion and getting it seconded on the floor essentially accomplishes what the staff is requesting. It's the same type of equipment. What we had spec'd and what we had recommended was an actual wheeled version versus a tracked version with a tread on it. The reason we went with the platform that is recommended here, for the most part, was economic. It was slightly less expensive, and so we wanted, we felt we could accomplish the same general thing. Mr. Branham's statement in terms of the versatility of the vehicle is an accurate statement. The tracked treaded version is more versatile, where you can get it into tighter spaces just by the nature of what it is. We took a slightly less expensive approach just out of the sense of, you know, trying to get the best value. But I think the staff would be supportive of moving forward with the motion as it was presented.
All right. Thank you.
Is that Bobcat available on the DAS purchasing program?
It's available and is part of the overall state bid award.
All right. Thank you. So I will now open the floor up for further discussion. Mr. Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. I concur with Councilman Branham. I see one of these machines right in front of my house during the driveway, and I see the value of having that tread on the bottom. That man could, he could operate that thing. But wheels, they tend to get bogged down. So I'm for the upgrade. So I'll be voting no against the one that we've selected, and I'll be voting for the upgrades.
Well, I think you just swapped it out, but...
Well, did we swap it out? Okay, then I'll be voting for it.
Yeah.
That's why I noted before.
Very good, very good. My mistake.
And I use Bobcats on a fairly regular basis, to be honest, every day, and definitely like the track better. So just my, I'm not an expert, but you might as well just get, you know, get your bang for your...
Yeah, spend the money, not forget a bang for it.
Anyone else?
And just for record, the new updated Bobcat tracks that they have out now, they work very well, because I know in the staff report, it said that they were going to buy a snowplow. And most people think, oh, well, track machines are not great on snow, but Bobcat created their own bar tracks, straight bar tracks, and that will do just as well, if not better, than a tired machine on snow and ice.
All right. Thank you very much. So a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? So at this time, we'll be voting...
Can we just, just confirming for the record, because people can't see you. Mr. Berger, you are in support of this?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I saw it, not as hit, so...
And just for clarification, the new amount was 102,122? Is that correct?
Yeah, I consider the quote.
Okay, so...
Is that off the state?
So question for city staff, if the new one, the one Councilman Branham recommends is not available, what do we do? Do we fall back on the T4? Do we wait?
Mr. Berger, I think you could speak to availability, right, based on the conversations with...
Yeah, we just got, we just got the quote, the amended version, as Councilman Branham has recommended, and we discussed just today. We got no indication that it was not available to us. We got no indication that it was not available to us.
All right, very good.
Again, I just want to confirm the quoted price is 102,122.
That is correct.
And if you wish to have a copy of that, actually, I can print it out here.
122, 122.
102, 122.
102, 122.
And again, these are mostly, this purchase is funded mostly through our sewer fund, and I think there's a small portion on sanitation as well.
Thank you. I've always been a believer, you have to have the right tool to get the job done.
Get the job.
Thank you very much. All right, so if there's no further discussion, can we get a roll call, please?
Vice President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Herschel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item, also administrative motion, is reappointing members to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So at this time, I'm going to actually split this administrative motion in half, and I'm going to turn over the floor at this time to the mayor, who chairs Board of Zoning Appeals. Madam Mayor.
We have two members who are coming up on their expiration, well, April 11th technically. Mr. Sloan, he actually just joined in December, but he was filling a vacancy. And then Mr. Harrison, he's been serving since 2014. Both have done a great job. Obviously, I've served a lot longer with Mr. Harrison, but both are happy to continue to serve, and we would like to reappoint them tonight to serve until April 11th, 2025. So I would make a motion to approve their reappointment.
Thank you very much. We have a motion by the mayor for the reappointment. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice President Dean. All right, and let's go ahead and finish that one out with a roll call, please.
Vice President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Herschel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. At this time, I will turn the floor over to Councilman Herschel for reappointing a member to the Economic Development Advisory Board. Councilman Herschel.
Sure. So we have two motions. The first is to reappoint Diane Dixon and a new term for the Economic Development Advisory Board. Diane's been very active over the last four years with that group, and she's a business consultant here in the area and has a lot of good ties to the business community. And she's asked if she could come back and be on that, and the rest of the board concurred with that, so I'd like to bring that forward to the council.
Thank you very much. All right, so we have a motion to reappoint.
Diane Dixon.
Diane Dixon. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the mayor. Further discussion? Roll call on that motion, please.
Vice President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Herschel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, Councilman Herschel.
The second motion is we have a vacancy on the board. Dr. Felder was the vice chair of the board, and due to the fact that she had taken a new position, educational position, and moved out of the state, she had to resign from that position. We put out a public announcement for that opening, and Bo Slater, who resides here in Xenia, put his name forward, and he is, he and his wife are a young couple. He's with, has, you know, an educational background, much like Dr. Felder had as well, too, and had a good opportunity to sit down and talk this over with him. And he's just excited to be in our community and said, you know, if I want to live here, I really want to participate and bring, you know, some of my talents, and he felt like this would be a good fit for him. I also think that since Dr. Felder was representing higher education for us from Clark State, and this is really Bo's area as well, especially with Central State in the area and Clark State and with the Career Center here, it'd be good for us to have someone from a higher education background. And he not only has that in terms of his day job, but also some of the groups that he represents as well, too. So I'd like to bring his name, Bo, to go ahead and fill the seat for the vacancy of Dr. Felder.
Thank you. We have a motion to appoint Mr. Bo Slater. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Further discussion on these motions? Roll call, please.
Vice President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Herschel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Our next item is approving the schedule of bills in the amount of $473,312. Mr. Do, anything to add to the schedule of bills tonight?
I have nothing specific to reference on the bills.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the bills?
Some of them.
Moved by the mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by the vice president. Further discussion, questions regarding the schedule of bills? All right, roll call, please.
Vice President Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens.
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean.
Aye.
Councilman Branham.
Aye.
Councilman Herschel.
Aye.
Mayor Mays.
Aye.
President Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is appointed officials' reports. I will start with Madam Law Director. Thank you.
I have nothing to add to this.
Nothing to add tonight. Anyone have anything for our law director tonight? Thank you very much. Mr. Finance Director.
I have nothing to add either.
Nothing further to add. Anyone have anything for the finance director? Do we have an idea if there's going to be an additional extension on income tax reporting?
I would find it pretty unlikely. I have not heard that. It's governed by the state, and typically, the state's going to follow the federal deadline. And I haven't heard any rumors of any movement to change that federal guideline, so I don't think it's going to be postponed again.
Thank you very much. All right. Mr. City Manager.
I want to break the trend. I have nothing for this evening.
Thank you. Anyone have anything for the city manager tonight? Okay. Next is reports of boards and commissions. We have no reports for tonight, so we'll move on to council comments. I'm going to read off a revised item report. On March 11th, city council adopted rules of council. In doing so, five standing committees were established. As council president, it was my job to appoint three members of each council, or three members of the council, to each standing committee and designate a chair of each committee respectively. So tonight, I have the five committees outlined. Our first is Finance and Budget Committee. I'm not going to read each one, because you have a copy in front of you. But at this time, I am appointing these members to the standing committee and designate chairs, as noted. So my question to the city manager is, when will we start officially meeting these committees? I know Finance and Budget has, but the rest of these have not.
Yeah, we actually have need for all four of these committees to meet, absolutely within the second quarter of this year. And I think we'll probably be reaching out to members of some of these committees within the next week, two weeks, to look at scheduling some of these meetings. So again, the Legislative Review of Governmental Affairs, we just talked to the law director the other day about some areas we want to work on and come back and have some discussion with council, the property management, we have some issues that have emerged just in the last couple of weeks. And then, as we previously discussed, both the utilities and transportation, as well as the public safety, have some pending items that we'd like to discuss with the council. So I'll look for those meetings certainly in the second quarter.
All right.
The rewrite to Title VIII, we discussed, the boards and commissions. We want to start that with Legislative Review. So, guys, we've been waiting for you guys to get together.
Okay. No pressure.
All right, thank you. And we know we're working on a new name for the Bracket Committee. All right, thank you very much. We don't have to vote on this tonight. That was just for public record. We have an executive session coming up. But before we do that, I will go around the table for council comments, and I'll start first with Councilwoman Dean, who doesn't have anything tonight. Councilman Scrivens, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, just have three things. I had initially tonight wanted to raise the issue about the upkeep and maintenance of Lexington Park, but I see Mr. Charles Green Jr. and Mr. Robert Moore have stepped up. Mr. Charles Green Jr. is the grandson of the gentleman who had discovered Mr. Robert Moore's father's corpse. So they're inextricably linked. Like to congratulate posthumously Mr. Mike Ungard and the others who were inducted recently in the Xenia Schools Hall of Honor, Ms. Jean Reed Dungy Schultz, and Blair Davis, and Dr. Elizabeth Henley Delaney. I want to congratulate each one of those for being standouts from the Xenia High School era. Also, just like to give a condolence to one of my classmates' wives who had passed away. Her name was Teresa Butt. She lived right around here on West Second, right there between North Detroit and, I think, Thornhill. And hate to see her go to her final reward, but we all must. And Mrs. Dolores Austin, she was the wife of former dean at Central State, Dr. J.C. Austin. And she was always the first one to get her yard cut every spring there on 42, just before you get to, what is it, well, before it's Clifton Road, no, Stevenson Road, between Rising Hills and Stevenson. You'll see the nicest lawn in the area, Mrs. Austin. And now she's gone on her final reward. So with that, Mr. President, I just want to say that, you know, the season now is for cleanup, fix-up, paint-up, and we all have to do that in order to keep the place looking good. You know, we had a heck of a winter. There's a lot of debris floating around everywhere. And as a council, a lot of us got together and picked up just a few bags. I think it was six or eight. It's prevalent, and we need to control it. With that, Mr. President, I thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Councilman Branham?
Nothing further to add.
Thank you. Councilman Herschel?
Yeah, I just want to commend our law director for the work on the drug house that we got condemned and shuttered and worked through the court system and the fine work that she did pressing on with that. And I'm hopeful, as we work forward on our Public Safety Committee, we can identify some additional ones and put a little bit of heat on folks who are just feeding off of folks in our community. Also, had, the law director gave me about an hour and a half's worth of tutorial on annexations of property, and she sent me with some homework as well, too. So Brent, I should be a lot better educated next time I have any discussions with you on this, but I got a lot of more homework to do on that.
I'm not sure if I'll be more or less frustrated.
That's right. That's right. That's right. I was really happy to see the two young men come forward. And, you know, it's hard to come forward and address us, you know, as a council. It's a little bit of an issue, but, and it just neat to see some young guys who say, hey, they got a passion. They don't know they know what to do next. So I just want to let you know, I'm going to be meeting with them, talking about what their vision would be with that. You may want to do that with me. And I think there's going to be, that would be a great opportunity for us to engage with our faith communities. We've had a number of churches that have talked about what are some places we can invest in our city. And so I think that this is a place we don't necessarily have to look for public funds to do that. I think there's a real opportunity for some private funding, and we need to come alongside, obviously, since this is a city-owned entity here. But I think there's some good creative things we can do. And wouldn't that be a great thing to bring the broader community together and make that a good project for the summer? So anyways, I'm just really excited about that. And maybe we can even tap into some of these recovery funds that are coming to us, figuring out how to spend some of those. And I'm not saying that all needs to be funded that way, but I think there's just some really good opportunities for us to do some work there and address that. So, yeah, that's all I have for today.
All right, thank you. Next up is mayor.
Thank you. On Saturday, the 10th, I had an opportunity to go to two different activities. The first was the Athletes in Action. They did a ribbon cutting for their Sports Performance Center, and that was a lot of fun. There was good participation from the community, from the county, and from several people here on council. So it was, their facility is amazing, and they are really looking to engage the public more and have people of all ages come out and use their facility. So it was exciting. And then that same day, I went to the first basketball game of the season for Dayton Flight. They're part of the TBL league. It's their second season. It's a minor professional basketball team, or basketball league. So they play all their games out at Oberforce, and that first game, it was a ton of fun. They started with 12 teams. They've tripled in the amount of teams that are playing in this league. So it's a really, if you have a chance to go out and see a game, it's a good game. It's a lot of fun, very family-friendly. Couple of good meetings this week. Brent and I had an opportunity to meet with Veteran Services with Tim Spradlin and Tim Esposito. And I know that I emailed you all about that, and we can talk a little bit about that in our work session. But I just want to make sure that I note that the work that they're doing at Veteran Services, and there are so many things available to our vets here in Green County. So I want to thank them for their work and just want to push that. With that being said, I hope that people come out Saturday to the Green County Skydive to celebrate a veteran here in Xenia. He's turning 100, a World War II vet. It's a really exciting event that's going to be happening Saturday, ending with fireworks, and that is free to the community, so I'm excited to participate in that. Sam Bain from Senator Portman's office came through Xenia and had a chance to meet with him and talk about some things that could affect us locally. So I just want to thank Senator Portman's office for being available and reaching out to us. Had a great sit-down with Jennifer Dunn. She also had some things happening with the AV Building, wanted to extend an invitation to council to visit the Cohatch out in Springfield sometime.